I believe we're recording.
They're here because we're going to be talking about the IDA.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's start the September 16th.
Does anybody else need an agenda?
Common Council Caucus.
Anybody else need the agenda?
Agenda, agenda.
Present are myself, Richard Conti, and members Kimbrough, Igo, O'Brien, Valeran, Anani, Farrell, Hoey, Fahey, Doche, and Ellis. And so we're going to go through the agenda for next week. So I want to note, we do have two public hearings. One on ordinance 131719, which is a rezone down in the second ward by Mr. Johnson. And the other one, ordinance 188119, relates to the approval process for telecommunications installments. Both of these are also on a planning committee agenda for tomorrow night. So depending on what happens tomorrow and what happens at the public hearing, they possibly can come up for a vote. Can you, this is my doctor, can you want to pick up on this?
Okay, yeah. We left off with the public hearings being scheduled for meetings.
Local laws held.
And local, yeah, we'll do it the Kelly way, the fast way.
Yeah.
Okay. Under local laws, held, number two, from Councilmember Doche.
Okay, I still have more time. Yes, so these are going to be on the agenda tomorrow. All right. Local laws held. You were just getting to local law C by Councilmember Doche, which is requested by the city treasurer relating to installment payments for property taxes, came out of Finance Committee on Monday with a positive recommendation. And he, now will come up for a pass. Any discussion on that? Okay. And Councilmember Pleers has joined us also. Mr. Flynn's local law, which makes a change in a reference to Commissioner of Public Works to General Services, that can be a pass also. On ordinances held, we have item five by Mr. Johnson, which is on the agenda for planning tomorrow and the subject of the public hearing on Monday. That is a potential passage, if there's no problems with it. And item number seven by Ms. Fahey is the telecommunications ordinance, which is on an agenda also for tomorrow and subject of a public hearing on Monday. And depending on those two activities, that could possibly come up for a vote on Monday. So that is what I have on ordinances. On resolutions, 6592 is a reappointment of Steve McLaughlin to the Board of Assessment So he, this is a reappointment for a five-year term. And there is, I know Judy has an issue, conflict on ordinarily, this would go to the Finance Committee, but there is a conflict with the chair, so I'm just wondering how to handle this, and where she would need to recuse herself. So should it be referred to Finance and you not be at the meeting? Or I can refer it to a different committee? Or we can have him come at a future caucus? Does anyone feel, I mean, this is a reappointment, Steve is well-qualified to continue.
So you do that Finance, she just doesn't vote?
Huh? So I can have, we can invite him to a caucus to see if anyone has questions or have him discuss his experience on the Board of Assessment Review? It's not, it can be done Monday. If we don't do it until the following meeting, that's okay too. Does anyone, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. I would prefer to do it at a Wednesday when you have more time than on the Monday night. And it's also earlier. Maybe the committee on Finance. No. I can introduce it, or who's the more senior member of Finance? But you, yeah, I mean, Dorsey, I mean, I don't.
He's what?
He's in Dorsey's ward, I mean, he's in Ginny's ward, I meant to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, you know, if you want, as a senior, you don't mind. Ginny, you're on Finance, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll have Farrell, and then we'll hold it for Monday. The next resolution, all right, this is a resolution requested by the Purchasing Department, and it would authorize our participation in an existing group purchasing program. I'm told, and you know, we discussed this at our leadership, and I had followed up with Marissa to see if someone might be here to answer any questions members might have, but nobody was available. It's kind of straightforward from their perspective. There is really no application, it just simply allows us to participate in this program, which other municipalities already participate in. We do participate in the state purchasing program through OGS, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I'm fine if members have questions, holding it until someone is available, or when some.
It's like, if you're here, put a standup when you just.
Yeah. Should I turn that off, or is everybody okay?
No, just don't talk into your arms.
I wouldn't talk into my arms.
You probably like talking, you can't hear, your voice is not projected.
I was saying that it was requested by the Purchasing Department. There is no current plans for purchases through the program. It's something that they felt that we should be a part of. We do participate in, you know, through the state in their purchasing program through OGS, so this is another option that would be out there. It's one that a number of municipalities do participate in.
Do we get who the municipalities are? That's only for me.
Yeah, actually, I can, there is, I will send out a link to the website that they use, and you can see some of that stuff. And it said, there was no one available to come here tonight to answer any questions that members might have. And it was put to me as, it's kind of straightforward anyway, so if anyone has questions, I can transfer them back. But it wasn't portrayed to me also as an urgency and had to be done right away, because there is nothing pending. So if it's okay, we'll introduce it, I will send the link out to everybody. We can have further discussion Monday, or we can hold it until we have someone available that might want to answer questions. Okay?
Who's doing this?
I don't know, I can do it for now, but we'll see by Monday.
Yep.
On the resolutions held, number five, was the one related to the Albany Empire, which we held.
Are they here?
And so we were holding it for presentation, we expect to do that on Monday. So if we're going to do a presentation on this on Monday, we will then take it out of order and do it first. Okay. Before the public hearing. All right. And I believe everybody's a co-sponsor on this. You're going to have your personal photographer, you'll have your personal photographer here to take care of.
I'm assuming you want a presentational copy?
Yes. Thank you.
There going to be any firebirds there?
Didn't the mayor just recognize?
She did.
All right.
The mayor has recognized?
She's already.
She didn't. Well, yeah, but this is disarmed, and we just wanted to hold it until we had, we can do a presentation. The last one, item numbers.
We want to force them to be here and recognize us.
Item number six relates to the rules change. That was on a Council Operations Committee meeting just before that, and it came out with a unanimous positive recommendation. So that's the resolution that allows sponsorship to be assigned to a committee versus an individual member. And so that would be a pass for Monday as well. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it.
No, I understand, but it was really.
I'm not training, the train got delayed.
The minute was, the meeting was quick.
Is it, if, you know, say I want to sponsor something, can my name be taken off and the committee put on, or can my name be left on?
So if it's something that you initiate, it's yours.
Okay.
Okay? If it's something that comes from the mayor or an executive branch department, it can be sponsored by an individual member. In most cases, that would probably be the case. But there are certain circumstances where it might be a piece of legislation that nobody wants to sponsor.
That is unpopular.
Because it's unpopular, like the trash fee. So in that case, it would be sponsored by a committee on behalf of either the mayor or the department. So it would be a committee, and it would have the department's, the city officials' name on it, you might say. And the chair of the committee would manage it, but it would be clear that it's being introduced on behalf of.
I do.
Okay?
I want to give them an announcement. So we have to take the training, the sexual harassment training.
Wait, I'm going to, I'm going to, let me finish up first. Okay. That was the last piece. So is there anything else on the agenda before we move on to other issues?
Just that.
Okay. Because there are some other issues we want to touch from leadership, but I'll let Michelle talk about the sexual harassment.
The sexual harassment, we're working on adding the council members' emails so that you guys can be able to enter and set up, just give me by nine, by Friday, when they get all set up with the city. And board members are also going to have to do the training. Next year, I believe we're going to start doing the violence in the workplace, also training, but right now, we just have to do sexual harassment training.
So teach us how to duck.
Really quickly, sexual harassment training is mandatory in the.
By the state.
By the state, and you have to have it completed by October 9. So it's time-sensitive, so once everything's all set up with Michelle, when she pushes it out, then you can log in. You've got to log in and do a red alert.
How long is it going to take us? An hour? And if you already completed it, just send me an email of the confirmation or the certification that you've completed a state verified training.
Because I did it at the University of Albany last week, so.
Just send me an email with the confirmation.
Do you have to go to the city email account to have it recognized?
No, I have your, the email that you use, that I'm doing it.
Okay. Anybody have questions on that? If not. A couple of other issues that came up, we brought up yesterday. One, there was this question about DGS eliminating their night shift, which came up at a prior caucus. And no one, the mayor and others down, had no idea what that was all about. So they have no information on that. It's Mayor Brian, Dave, and Marissa. So they didn't have any information on that. The Living Wage Committee, which is getting a little frustrating, because we made the changes a while back. They are supposed to be appointing five members. We had the one with Fred Pfeiffer. There is a second person who they've approached, who is willing, wants to do it, but has to get clearance from her employer, she's a state employee. And then on the others, it's sort of like, you know, maybe we should put out a call for nominations. So we're going to try and continue to follow up on that, but I would also suggest, if members have recommendations, I would suggest you get those to Dave Gallin. So this is, you know, it's been stagnating for a while with the committee, you know, those, once they have that together, their nominations, recommendations have to come to the council, we have to confirm those appointments. And we ask that, even though they have Fred already accepted, they gave him an appointment letter, to hold up and submit all of them at once, so we can see the whole package, rather than doing this piecemeal. Huh?
What is the meeting time?
There's no fixed time, or anything like that.
What's the background of what would it?
It's people, you can look in the, in the city code, what's in code, nothing more than that. You want people who are, you know, there's a labor background, could be other backgrounds, affirmative action backgrounds, things like that. The prior appointees were, did have kind of a labor background. Kathy was on it as Chair of Human Resources at that time. Kelly will be on it, ex officio, whoever the council chair of Human Resources will be on it, right now, that would be Kelly. They did have their affirmative action officer at the time, who was Corey, was it?
Yeah.
Right. And that was, that was a long time ago, who was on it. And then I think it was Anita Thayer.
Bernie Mulligan.
Bernie Mulligan.
And then there was Castor, who ended up not being on.
Yeah, okay. So that's what happened there. On the other part, remember, we also added the quarterly reporting requirements, and we did get, at least, I think I've seen one of those reports come to us, in terms of who they had a working, working, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of working, sorry, a living wage clause with. So that's, hopefully that we'll continue to be on track with those quarterly reports. So we brought that up.
To be real fast, how many people are these short units?
Well, there are five members, plus Kelly is kind of a six, or the Human Resources Chair is a six, is ex officio. So there are two people that they've identified, and that there are three more.
And they need three.
Yeah, but just, you know, if you have recommendations, just give them to Dave, and hopefully they'll be more affirmative in trying to reach out and do things like that.
So can we use, like, Anita? Because Anita and Bill are two people like.
I think they, well Kathy, they didn't want.
They didn't want to continue.
We also had discussions about staffing issues and vacancies and all of that, which we've all had. And what we're supposed to be getting now, what do they call them? They were, I have.
Vacancy, vacancy, job vacancy reports?
I have a staffing trajectory reports. So these are monthly reports, as I recall, or more?
I think monthly.
Monthly reports. So these are, basically what they were going to give us are the same reports that they get from Human Resources, the mayor's office gets, which is their monthly staffing trajectory reports, which indicates, looks at what positions are vacant and things like that, which is a lot more comprehensive than what we're getting right now. So we haven't gotten quarterly reports from the police department, for example. We do get them from the fire department, but this would be more frequent, so that's something that we're hoping to now get.
The last point about vacancies, was, was 244 vacancies?
Well, that was something that Nick Blaze, I think, put together, that was outside of something.
So what is the purpose of knowing where the number of, if you're not measuring the impact, because there's an impact, if you're not measuring.
Yeah, well, that's a different issue. I mean, this will give you, this will let you know by department where the vacancies are.
And then we'll sell them the focus on what's the economic impact.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have to make a determination on impact, they didn't seem to.
Physical impact.
We talked about DGS impacts.
Other employees.
And their feeling was that there has not been an impact, that there really are, the vacancies, oh, there are always going to be vacancies, but that there was not a big vacancy issue in DGS. Their worst, not mine.
Yeah, and we have a council member come in every meeting talking about the impact.
I know, and that they were really.
They can't keep dismissing it, when a council member comes to us and says.
And that there really was not an impact on services from DGS, so that they were still doing, I'm just saying.
So then we got to keep hearing from our council members that there is an impact.
There's no impact.
So then they don't do anything.
So is there anything else we needed?
Where's the money coming from?
I don't think.
Both in the budget?
So those, that's, those are the main things there. If there are issues, you know, we meet on the.
Second Tuesday.
This, well, the two, yeah, the second Tuesday or the Tuesday before our Wednesday caucuses, so if there were, you know, issues that come up here, we make sure we try to follow up with that. If there are issues in between, just Kelly and myself, or Corey, or all three of us, actually, you know.
Was it shoe use?
Yeah, but there was. I asked a question about policing and staffing, and how they, well, and also the union contract, informed us that Herb told them they can't.
Yep.
The police department's union leadership would give you the impression that the city's just not moving on anything. Well, Herb stepped in, because the police department, their union, has to work some issues out, so Herb has put a halt to negotiations, not the mayor's office, not the officers. So that's why that's at a standstill. I also asked about us.
Can you put us up to the negotiating?
Herb, it's the Public Employees Relations Board, so that oversees the rules for collective bargaining and all that.
And I believe the issue there is the desire of the detective's unit to break off.
Yeah, to break off.
And that, that, there's a conflict between.
Right, it's actually, the detective unit, my understanding, is already broken off, but within the police, the rank and file, they want, they're going Council 82 versus PBA. So they're fighting amongst themselves about how they want to be represented.
I know.
That's why, that's slowed down, like that. I also asked about the staffing and our, doing our own academy, because I, because the mayor said it was a capacity issue, and I said, well, do we have, you know, whatever crossed our mind to go back to Zone Five? They have more capacity, this, that, and the other. And she said, no, we're in the process of, they're developing the ability to double our capacity for academies, and they're anticipating putting that larger class in in February. And as a matter of fact, we, there might be an opportunity for us to start taking on police. It cadets from other police departments, and getting revenue from, from training those officers, so that was it.
And also, top of the police officers, I believe that we have 800 applicants scheduled to take the exam, maybe this week or next year.
That's it. That's where we're always going, why?
And digital?
Well, it's high, it's going up.
It was 500 less.
Yeah, it's got better than the last time. But it was 2000 when I took it, ten years ago. There is a drop-off of people wanting to be police officers.
Can't imagine why.
I've talked to sergeants.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead, any other, Kathy?
Well, I just want, you know, Planning Committee is next, and I, this is an update by the Albany Industrial Development Agency and the Capital Resource Corporation. All, you know, these last months, people have had a lot of questions about the pilots that are given out, so this is an opportunity to ask those questions, also affordable housing in some of the, you know, these agreements. So this is a good opportunity, so I hope people who aren't on the committee will consider staying to listen in.
Tom?
Going back to the pulling, Kelly, 800, is how diverse are you? Are we getting lucky?
I don't, that I can't speak to, I can find out.
You'd like to know.
I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the chief, 3:30, so. Well, they don't usually know that until they canvass the person, right? It's not part of the application process, is it?
Yes, and no, they kind, they have an idea.
Do they?
Based on applications.
Okay. That's changed.
Is there something?
Okay, I'm just, I don't know. I never looked at applications. But I was always told they don't know until they canvass and a person comes in.
So the Finance Committee also met on Monday with Darius and Mike Wheeler on financial reports and budgets. I think a number of members were there, but I think Judy, you want to update it a little bit?
Yeah, so in addition to passing out local law C and going over the second quarter report, we had a partial discussion, I think, about what's anticipated in the budget. I think Mike was willing to share a certain amount, but he's, you know, basically, they are in the process of developing the budget. Part of what was disclosed is the expectation that the trash fee will be in there, and will be in there at this year's rates. And there's some question about how we deal with the penalties associated with that. That treasurer's noted is kind of high for a $90 fee, you know, for $50 after a certain amount of time. In that, some, in that discussion, some issues were raised. There was universal agreement that we have significant concerns about the infrastructure, the roads, the sidewalks throughout the city. And there was also some discussion about vacant buildings and monitoring that. And Miss Pleers suggested that we follow up that conversation, and I don't know that we quite finished that conversation, but it was a long enough meeting. So follow up that conversation with specific, a memo to the mayor with specific requests, recommendations with regard to differences in the budget from 2019 budget. So I, and another issue that was raised was also the compensation of some of our employees, especially in buildings and codes, which were, so there were those issues that were also, oh, and also senior services. Those were also, except for the roads, those were also raised in our recommendations in our budget intent memo last year. So I drafted up a memo on that with those recommendations, and I shared it with the Finance Committee to get their input, because it has to be acted upon quickly, we, I need to get it out. Frankly, right now, I'm without the ability to create any documents, my laptop is in the shop. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to get something on paper for the committee to react to. Miss Pleers has suggested that it be edited down, and I'm, and as I said in my cover email, I just like to put something on paper and give people something to react to. So I would love an assistant, you know, assistance and further feedback on paring that down. And I think, you know, I do tend to be a little wordy at times, but I want, but part of that, I, but part of that is, I also don't like anybody to feel like they're, the issues that they raise have not been adequately advocated for. So I do think that it can be pared down. And I, other Finance Committee members, I had asked for input by today, because I would like to move forward with any specific edits on it. Did anybody else, Ginny, might have any reaction? I haven't heard anything from, did you see the memo? Did you see my?
No.
All right, all right. So I would love, you know, input from you, but Miss Pleers, I would love for you to, you know, take a knife to that, I think, in terms of getting, you know, getting it crisp and to the point. And I had thought about simply listing the issues without necessarily having any of the advocacy behind it. But, you know, again, I, I feel like we do need to do a certain amount of advocacy as well, but maybe that's done in a follow-up meeting or something. So I intend to share that memo with the full council once I have that feedback from the Finance Committee, and hopefully we'll send it out by Friday, because we only have about a little over two weeks before the budget will be introduced, and of course, I have to go to print and all that, so. But we did give, I think, Mike a good flavor for some of the issues that we thought were paramount in that. Mr. Valeran?
Is it too late to hand some issues, specifically with the parks, et cetera, not the private plan, that may not be given services to be served, as well as with the public engineer trying to set up that.
So.
Just get one more label.
The, I did include in my memo something about parks, and the fact that I think that we need to.
Thank you.
Add additional funding to be able to make them the gems and focal points, rather than things that detract from our neighborhoods. In that memo, I don't know if Miss Pleers, if that was one of the things that she thought was maybe not something that we should be, you know, so we're, I think, Miss Pleers, Dorsey, why don't you say what your, rather than me paraphrasing?
Sure, and I really have a meeting next, relating to the point, I think that the memo given, being given, it's the 11th hour, should be concise and to the point, and say, the focus should be on a few priority issues that are of concern to the majority of all the council members, versus having a hot pot of issues that we're sending to the mayor's office at this time to ask if they allocate resources to, not to say that folks can't allocate for all of these issues, but I think that this memo should be reflective of priority issues that the majority of us can get, can get.
And what would be the ones that you would then pare it down to?
For example, infrastructure issues is on it, street cycles, one of the, on tents. to talk about as an issue for our residents, which would be a big thing.
Can I just, I can make an example of two parks, let's, four, two parks, I mean, so, please, one, please, one, and this is the time we have, I started making those possible, one is in my list, one in that, but both in our, volume, name of the city. There is an infrastructure investment as well.
So can I get a sense from council members as to whether or not addressing additional infrastructure needs in the parks is something that you feel that should be included in such a memo? Is there, is there anybody who-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said that you were looking at last year's budget, and you're going over that with them and see what was, I mean, I think that's, probably a lot of that's still priority, how much, how much is left over, that was, our recommendations have weren't touched at all.
So.
And if so, was that discussed, and they said they didn't have any worries, and there's different priorities and?
I think the main thing that, that came out of the other, of the meeting the other day was on the Buildings and Code, staffing issues, and the Senior Services, those are two that are carryovers, I did list all of them, the, last year we included a comment about census, we included a comment about the capital plan.
Did we mention traffic engineering in that?
No, we did not.
It was everyone, everybody here, I think, that's issues, running or down.
Well, it's-
They told me it was supposed to be one more labor, but I said they could give it about three or four, and we're working to catch up.
The signs in the city are terrible.
Well, that's a good question, Paul Dillon used to fabricate the signs, he was trained on the old machine, okay, he left, and from what I understand, the next guy they had, he'd get up and off, so now they don't have people fabricating signs, I had people just today asking me, street signs, people couldn't find their houses because the streets were not there, or?
The paint's peeling off a lot of them, the signs are bent, it's just, it's a mess.
Maybe we can review last year's memo, and, you know, what you put, what you've put together, Judy, and then give you some more feedback on this. So Ms. Pleers, what I'd like you to do is go ahead and, and take a knife to it, and then I will share last year's memo with everybody, along with a revised memo. If you could send it to me, both as redlined and also whole, and hopefully I will have a computer that I can work with tomorrow afternoon, to do that. All right? Thank you, everybody.
Any other questions? Issues, et cetera? Okay. Then I would encourage people to stay behind for the IDA presentation, and if there's nothing further, we'll see you all on Monday.